Hello. Welcome to the meeting. If you could please be seated. Thank you. One of our members is not here today in person, but she is here on that phone. I think that's a phone.
Speaker phone.
Speaker phone. So she can hear everything you're saying and thank you.
I see what you think.
We begin as usual with time for public comment. If you wish to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. If you're going to speak, you need to go to the microphone over there. And when you begin to speak, please give your name and what business you're addressing. If you don't speak in the microphone, you can't be heard on FCTV. That's all the microphone does. It doesn't really amplify your voice. So you do need to speak up, and we need to speak up and remember that. Is there anyone who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda? No. And we will have to take roll call votes for Pam to be sure she's included in the vote. The minutes of the meeting, Paul?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of minutes of November 29th with some minor corrections.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye.
Pat, aye.
All aye.
Pam?
Pam? Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda, we have an approval not required. The applicant is Tom Bunker. And the plan is land to divide one lot into two lots located at zero West Falmouth Highway. Mr. Bunker, are you here?
He was hiding.
He's here.
Hiding, yes.
Yeah. And if you could tell us, as you described these lots, they're unusual looking lots, why you're doing this, because it wasn't on your application?
I was hiding and now I'm looking for a mouse.
Oh, okay.
There it is.
Check my garage, I get plenty of mice.
I'll show you if I could. Andrew must have been using it. Record name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design. Here representing myself. I prepared this plan. As you said, it's unusual looking lots. Started its life as a long skinny unbuildable parcel. And it's gone through a couple of changes. And this entire parcel is along Route 28A in West Falmouth is unbuildable now. And it's being cut roughly in half to create two unbuildable parcels.
Does it create anything in addition?
Excuse me?
Does it create anything in addition to two unbuildable parcels?
It's two unbuildable parcels. These, as you can see, are road frontage along here. And there's, you know, vacant land in the back. I'm not going to get into talking about our plans televised, but we'll be bringing another plan before you in January.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Anyone? Deb, do you have anything you want to contribute?
I recommend endorsement.
Okay, so we have a motion to endorse.
I move to endorse this plan of land as unbuildable lots, creating unbuildable lots.
A second?
Second.
John, all in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Pat, aye.
Aye.
John? Thank you. And you're also... Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a public meeting. The applicant is Gary Guedee. Site plan review application to construct a detached accessory apartment at 81 Redbrook Road. Who will be speaking for this?
Detached. Oh, detached, okay.
Thank you, Juan.
So the plan is to build an auxiliary apartment.
Could you give your name? Your name first?
I'm sorry, I don't contain you.
Could you give us your name first?
Oh, sure. My name is Gary Guedee, 81 Redbrook Road.
Okay. Speaking, ask the owner.
So what we're trying to do is build an auxiliary apartment on the front of the property. It would be a two-car garage as a workshop. I have antique cars. And above it will be a building apartment that I will rent to my escape rooms. He's from Falmouth.
Is that all you'd like to say about him?
Yeah, I mean, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It's a one and three-quarter acre lot. The building will be about 50 feet or 60 feet from the street. 16 feet from the back lot line. I don't know, I don't, I've never done this before, so.
Oh, okay.
At a loss, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine, we can, we can go from there. The planning department will be here with us, you want to talk about what you found?
Sure. The accessory apartment is going to be roughly 631 square feet. So it's only 36 percent of the... It fits all our standards. No issues with it. He does, he is aware that he will have to go to ZBA for structure in the front yard and for the accessory apartment.
For?
The accessory, detached accessory apartment. And there's, he's aware he'll have to construct a second means of address. And there's an issue around the apartment. But it's a huge issue, and he said he was going to talk to them and clear it up.
And what is that?
There was a, there was a well on site. It has to be legit.
We sorted, we sorted that out today. It's all sorted out. Originally, when I purchased the house, the well didn't pass. So Scott asked to have it retested, which we did, and it passed. But somehow, I think in the Board of Health, when they looked it up, they may have saw the old report. We had updated that report back in July, and I spoke to them today, and they have it. And I think we're all set there.
And there's the issue of, it's a four-bedroom septic. There'll be a fifth bedroom in the accessory apartment. So he has to decide whether or not he wants to upgrade his septic system, or if he wants to take one bedroom out of the house to put in the accessory apartment.
But he can make that decision before he goes to the building commissioner, is that right?
He still has to go through ZBA and yeah, and get packs to the health department. So it can be, you know, just part of our findings if we...
Okay, any questions from the board? Bob?
So I'm assuming that because there's such a distance between the primary unit and the accessory, that the accessory is going to have its own septic system?
I did speak with Scott. He said that if I wanted to, I could delete a bedroom.
Yeah.
Because I thought septic would be prohibitively expensive for this. But it turns out it's only probably about $6,000 to do the septic. It would have been $3,500 to tie into the existing system. So I'm hedging on putting a new septic system and assuming that the costs come back at a reasonable number.
Where is the existing septic? Is it in front of the existing house?
Yeah, it is in the front. It's right in front of the garage doors, basically. It's about 180 feet from the house to the septic. And it's all downhill.
Okay. And the, your frontage is on Redbrook Road. And is that considered your front yard where the accessory unit is going to be going?
It is, but the house is a little over 300 feet off the road.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm sure that's something the ZBA will...
Yeah, we have to go through ZBA too, but this was the first step.
Yeah. Okay. Nice look construction.
Did you guys...
Bob, are you done?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you guys determine this has architectural effect of a single-family home? Is that your opinion?
Yeah.
Let me say that, then I'm okay.
Questions? Paul? Pam? Any questions? No?
I have a question. I wonder if you could scroll up to show your rendering.
Show what?
The rendering of the building you're planning to put in there. No, that's your house now.
That's the existing house.
Yeah. And that's all clabbered and trimmed.
Um...
And there it is. There it is.
The rendering's not in here.
Yeah, no.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I'm wondering, considering part of the bylaw is to ensure that the new building looks as if it goes with the old building, that they go together?
Right. We'll be doing the same siding. This is the rendering that I had, but we'll, we'll be siding until it looks like it goes...
Oh, so it's not going to have that fake stone stuff?
No, it won't have the stone. It'll have clabbered.
Ah.
Yeah, just, just like the existing house will have.
Okay, that was, that was my concern.
Yeah, yeah. We want to blend in, obviously, to the neighborhood and house.
The existing house is shingle, isn't it?
No, it looks like clabbered. Oh, is it shingle? Whatever, they're going to do the same thing on the accessory.
Well, we keep calling it clabbered, and I thought it was shingle. I could be wrong.
No, you might be right. But he's going to make whatever the existing house is, the new accessory will also...
So maybe showing clabbered and stone there, so what are we going to approve?
We're not approving stone.
You're going to get a new plan?
What's your feeling on that?
We can put it in a decision that it's the same siding as he has on the wall.
Let's condition it, so that he doesn't have to go to the expense and time of new drawings. Is that okay?
I'd be fine with that as one of the conditions and...
Any other conditions? Pam?
No, Pat.
Pat.
I'm curious, because are you providing any kind of a washer dryer somewhere tucked in here?
There is, there is a washer dryer.
Okay, I'm missing it somewhere.
It will, it will be actually put into that, that closet storage area when we, when we build, when we build it out.
And you ask that out of curiosity, now closets required?
Out of curiosity, but then doesn't that enlarge the footprint of the?
No.
ADU?
No, it doesn't. That, that part is already included in the ADU.
Oh, it is?
Right.
The storage, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's here.
See, I don't have my eyes on. Oh, yes, 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 I see. Okay. Yep. Okay.
It looks like a good plan.
Good, doesn't it?
Are we ready to ask for an endorsement for our next meeting?
Madam Chair, if I may, you have the ability, if, if you'd like, to make a motion to approve the application as presented. Have a second, and then during your discussion, talk about the findings and conditions that you would like us to write up.
They're right in your packet.
And we've provided a draft for you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
And then you can approve it tonight if, if so inclined.
We appear to be inclined to do that. Bob, if you can find it in your packet and read it for us. You heard it.
Site plan review, 81 Redbrook Road, accessory apartment.
If, if I may, you, you'll just need to have a motion to approve. You'll need a second. And then during your discussion, you can talk about some of the findings and conditions that we've provided for you.
Okay, we're adding that condition.
Right.
Okay, so if we could have a motion to...
I move to approve this ADU plan.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? John?
Aye.
Well, before you move on.
Yeah.
Now during your discussion, you're going to want to talk about some of the findings and conditions.
Now, rather, okay.
Right.
You heard one condition. We want to be sure that it's going to be in the siding that matches the house.
Right, we've got that.
Okay. And then we want our standard conditions.
Correct.
Right. Are there any other conditions?
Yes, number five, six, and seven on the back.
You've got standard right here, five, six, and seven.
Five, six, and seven. One is, but five is about not directing any stormwater runoff to public property. That is standard. And you have to post the address for this residence. That also is very standard. And to install dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area.
Great. And just for clarity's sake, perhaps the other conditions that you may want to include are, the plan should be constructed as you approve them tonight. Minus one of that conditions about the siding.
You would like the standard ones that are here, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, I'm just indicating it for the record, that's all.
Okay, I'll read them. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. So I, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll just read what's in bold.
Yeah.
The principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owned or occupied for a period of seven months per calendar year. And either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. And an affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner. Attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owned or occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. And we read the others, the stormwater runoff and the address and the dry wells, rain garden.
And now we vote?
And now you can vote.
Well, I have...
Then I want to ask you a question.
If the board's...
Jim?
Well, I'm just a little concerned about the design and saying it's architectural effect. And in the past, we've been really insistent upon the type of windows, the siding, and everything, and this is showing completely different, and we're just saying, go ahead and do it. Sounds like we're changing our minds. I'm okay with it if that's what we're going to do. But we gave other people a really hard time about having matching windows and siding and colors. And these, these, this house has contemporary windows, and this, the front, the little one doesn't. It has a whole different, to me, I mean, you folks determined it was, had the same architectural effect, but I don't see that. I was wondering if the other board members see that or not.
Ask them, add the conditions that you'd like to see.
Well, at least the windows and siding should match.
We, I would be happy to do that. A little background on this property, it was abandoned for five years. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll have to admit to folks, I sold this property. I represented the seller, I'm very familiar with it. I have no relationship with the buyer. But I, I am very intimately involved. I know the, the building well. And I, I know what the windows are like and the siding, what's shown on the sketch. This drawing has never been anything like we've ever approved in the past. So I'm just wondering, are we creating new poli... I, I'm fine with the whole idea. But I'm just wondering, with you folks, are we giving up on that?
You already added a condition that you would, that would match the existing, that that is not going, is not going to be what's there. That, so the condition's already been added, that it's going to match the main house.
Okay, windows, siding, and doors?
You want to add something about windows, that's totally fine. But the siding's already been added.
Because that's really makes, roofline, window, siding, and doors are really what makes the difference. And I don't see any of those matching right now.
Just so you know, the, the main dwelling is set very far back.
I'm very familiar with it.
So. But no, you guys can condition whatever you want.
I think we should.
Okay.
Do you want to amend that previous condition, the siding? What we have right now is the siding will match the existing dwelling. Would you like to amend that?
Go to windows, siding.
I didn't see it, Jim, as being completely different. I'm looking at the same photograph you are.
Look at the windows.
Maybe you could see what you're saying.
Those are two over two.
Those windows, two over two. And here we have, at first they look as if they're modern casement, but in fact, they have mullions in them.
Pretty sure they're modern casements. Look at the other windows of the house.
Yeah, that's what they look like, modern case.
Look at the back of the house.
They're, they're not, they've got mullions in it. See them?
I see.
So you think they're the same windows, then? Okay.
No, do they have grills?
No, I don't think they're the same. I think they've been adapted to a smaller dormer.
Okay, I said what I said, I'll let it go.
It's pretty simple. No, go ahead.
Is the connection to the town water system included as one of the conditions?
Can't. Doesn't exist.
No, but they have a well.
A private well.
They have a well, and one of the notes here says they're going to have to tie into the water system. Is that a condition for the...
I don't know, are they doing that?
That's not a condition.
Getting town water there?
We don't.
I thought, I thought he said the well passed, and he was going to use the well. I thought that's what I heard.
The well did pass.
He said that. Yep.
I mean, if, if you need me to tie into town water, I could certainly do that for that, for that building.
Well, I'm just referring to a note in the background here saying that tying in before it was done. But that was written by you, apparently.
No. That's a separate issue anyway, that he's going to have to deal with, with the water department.
That's really not in our purview, anyway. That's water health issue.
Yeah. And, and he's talked to Scott.
Yeah.
So siding and windows and doors are the...
Siding, windows, and doors. Got it.
Charlotte?
Yes. Go ahead.
I just have a question. Not even a question. I want to agree with Jim. I know that's hard for anyone to believe, but I, I feel really strongly, we have been quite tough on folks who, we believe, have not complied with the sort of synergy between the two edifices. That they look alike and they act alike, and there is a concerted effort to make sure that they're sort of in harmony. And this doesn't match up with that. And I think as part of the condition, we need to make sure that it does.
I think...
The windows and everything else are, you know, match.
Pam, Pam, I think that we agree with you, we agree with Jim, so it's not that odd. And we have added the condition that, in addition to the siding, the windows and doors, which I assume mean the garage doors also, considering they are the most prominent doors here, will match the other building. We've added that condition.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, so now I think we're ready to vote. So all in favor with the motion with those conditions? John? Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Pat, aye.
All aye.
Pam?
Aye.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's, it's a nice plan. Next on our agenda, the applicant is Nika Development LLC Continued. We've had this before. This is a site plan review application for an increase in parking and an increase of over 500 square feet in gross floor area at 259 263 Old Main Road. Who is here for that today?
Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
Here in town, and I'm representing Nika Development LLC. I am joined tonight by Greg Serunian from ResCom Architecture, as well as Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering. One of the applicants as well, Alex Zelfand is here with us tonight. So we, we did submit revised site plans, and we've been before historic. Part of the reason we requested our last continuance was in order to get before historic, which did occur last week. And that hearing went well. They've approved the project. The only change they've made, which aren't on your plans, is the addition of brick pavers to this back portion here. So that is, that's been made since the, since the historical meeting. And I didn't submit hard copies of that, because I knew we were past the deadline, but I wanted to just discuss that with you this evening. Happy to do so. But that is the only change to the plans from what was submitted to you about a week and a half ago.
Kevin, I gave them that as well when you gave, I just don't have hard copies of that.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll get those over. So there's been a lot of revisions to the plans, a lot of revisions to the building. The building plans were submitted to you, and... So this is the building that'll be facing Old Main Road, and we prepared a rendering of it as well. Historic was pleased with this redesign. We thought that what we've done is really try to create the appearance of a single-family dwelling as you look at it from Old Main Road. I know there were some concerns over the design. We thought the best way to do it would be to tackle Plan, Historical's concerns and questions. And as I said, they were satisfied, and actually quite pleased with this. Might be some minor changes to the coloring of this, of this vertical siding portion here. But other than, other than that, what you see is, is what is being proposed. And then there is built the duplex to the rear, which is shown here. And then there will be the single-family house on the porch currently known as 263. So that's the site plans that were revised and submitted to you, which, you know, I think are, are much more in line with what this board, what I, what we believe this board is looking for. And I'd be happy to address any questions that, that you might have. And if I can't, perhaps Tim or Greg can.
Makes me really glad for the Historic Commission, that's a really much better-looking building now. So on the board, let's start at this end. Paul, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Pat?
The engineering report said something about, in front of the single-family house, there's going to be a lot of disturbance around, and there was no indication of, yeah, runoff calculations.
So we did submit the revised drainage calculations. Those were submitted last week.
Okay.
And I think engineering made a comment that there wasn't much in the way of mitigation at the rear of the house. That's something we could add if they felt necessary. We, we didn't think it was going to be necessary based on, on the calculations that our engineer ran.
How's that?
That answers the question. The copy I had from engineering was still flagging it.
Jim?
No questions.
Bob? John?
Engineering wanted to know how many bedrooms is the plan? The duplexes? Yep, so... I think a total of...
Can you take a break, or will you?
Our architect's doing some quick math over here, should be able to... How many bedrooms are in? John, today I don't. 16 is what, what I'm being told. Total of 16 between the two duplexes, so the two duplexes and the single-family house would have a total of 16 bedrooms. They're indicating that the septic is a 15-bedroom septic system.
For the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineers, that what you might be looking at is an old referral. It's designed for 16 bedrooms, it's not updated. The septic, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board or comments? Okay, there's apparently an issue that's not in our purview, but is still outstanding about whether or not it's appropriate to have, to combine uses of the duplexes in the front and the single-family at the back. But that's not our issue.
Yeah, I submitted a rather lengthy memorandum to Town Council for their review. And we have not been back before the zoning board since that memorandum was submitted. So we're not sure where Town Council's coming down on that, but that is a question the zoning board will have to tackle, and if we end up changing the plans based on the result of our zoning hearings, we'll of course come back to modify.
Okay, good. If we have no more questions, we might be ready to close this, and.
Just one more, how old is the barn that's gonna be torn down?
I don't know the age, but it is outside of the Historic District.
Yeah. I'm just curious, you know, old timbers are worth something.
That's a conversation we can have later, Bob.
It's probably aligned for those.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Through you, you may just want to highlight the engineering referral comment number twenty, it's about the retaining wall, it appears to still be an open question.
That's something that we'd have to deal with at the building permit stage, typically retaining walls more than four feet from top to base of foundation requires a building permit, and that's something we'd cross at that time. I don't think, I don't think there's anything we can do ahead of applying to the building permit.
Okay. So perhaps that could be added to a finding, if the board's so inclined, and a condition, if you want.
Right. Okay, I think what we'd like to do is request an approval for our next meeting with conditions and findings laid out so that we can see them all at one time.
So, just like the previous application, because we're moving into this new way in which you operate, you have the ability to do that, however, you did indicate in previous meetings that you would like to be able to just, rather than read the entire motion into the record, you want to be able to just be selective and discuss the conditions. So we've drafted a list of potential conditions for you for tonight, in addition to findings. So if you're so inclined, you can approve tonight, second, or provide a motion, second, discuss, just like the previous application.
Okay, but now, this is my second time by with the new thing, and I hadn't actually seen it before, so I want to comment on it right now.
Sure.
And this is just off the top of my head, and then each person here is free to comment on it also, not exactly what I expected. And I would like, myself, I would like to see a change made in it, so that the first sentence is very clear, that we, that our motion is to approve, and the exact address of the property and the part of town that it's in, the neighborhood that it's in, so that people listening know where this is going to happen, but without all these numbers that confuse anyone listening to it, and they stop listening at that point. So to make it clear which property we're dealing with, and that we're voting to approve the application as submitted, and the key findings are, and the key findings shouldn't be the standard old things that we're so used to, it would include the standards and not have to read them.
Sure.
And we can go over if we like, what may or may not be standard, we might, you know, my idea of standard might not be standard, so we'll see. And then whichever conditions are exceptional, rather than the exceptions that are called for, so that there's some agreement in advance that that's the way it would be, whereas this seems to be more of what we've been doing, really. So rather than acting on this tonight.
Sure.
Let's wait until we have one that we think fits the, I'm sorry about that, we're just trying to find a new way to work, and we're close, but not quite there. So asking for a draft approval that we can act on at our next meeting, and I apologize to you, Kevin, for holding it up that way.
That's okay, I mean, I'm encouraged where we are tonight, based after our last meeting, so we're perfectly content with, you know, as much as I would love to have an approval in this moment, having a draft decision that's gonna be voted at the next hearing, I have no exception to.
Okay, great, unfortunately, because it's December and near Christmas, that will be a little bit longer than usual.
Yeah, we're back, we're gonna be, we're gonna be going to zoning on January nineteenth is when we go back to, because they're also on a bit of a holiday hiatus, and their January fifth hearing was already full, so we are going back to zoning on January nineteenth. So what date in January would we be looking at?
Tenth.
Okay.
The tenth? Is this good with everybody?
Yeah. I just have one question.
Oh.
The schematic in the notes on item twenty, what's the height of that wall?
I believe it's about five feet, which will require a building permit.
It is five feet, okay, it isn't shown, I'm curious.
The genetic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. My last time before you this year, so I wish you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, and the same to you. Thank you very much. And we're gonna take a five-minute recess because one of our members needs a little minute to put in some eye drops, so five-minute break, make as much noise as you would like.
Yeah, discussing.
Getting there. A special permit requested from the planning board has to do with lot coverage. As you know, the 159 Main Street building is in the Business One District on Main Street, right out here in Town Hall Square. And the zoning bylaw allows by right seventy percent lot coverage. The present building has fifty-eight point three percent lot coverage. We propose to install a deck over the alley, the way, the drive that extends between the building and Town Hall Square. And if that deck is the full length of the building as shown on this proposed conditions plan, which shows the proposed deck, a ramp that will provide handicap access, and stairs down from the back of the deck in the rear of the building, then the lot coverage will be increased from the fifty-eight point three percent to seventy-three point eight percent. That's about three hundred and fourteen square feet more than seventy percent would be. And that's about a quarter of the proposed deck that's in excess of the seventy percent. So the zoning bylaw allows the planning board to issue a special permit to increase lot coverage above the specified schedule, which is seventy percent in a Business One District, under certain criteria. The old bylaw section was two forty sixty-nine D and now it's two forty eleven point three parentheses five, close parentheses. And that section of the bylaw provides the criteria for the planning board to review in making, granting a special permit. It requires that a professional engineer determine that stormwater runoff from the site will not be increased by more than ten percent for a ten-year storm. That soil loss rate from the site will not be increased above the existing rate by more than ten percent. And that the average summer daily trip generation will not exceed four trips per linear foot of lot frontage. Planning board also has to determine that erosion control measures will be adequate to prevent excessive soil loss and that landscaping and screening requirements are met. Now, this is an old bylaw. It has terms in it that are not seen elsewhere in the bylaw and references to the ten-year storm. We don't think of a ten-year storm anymore. And inasmuch as stormwater needs to be retained on a site today, talk about not exceeding ten percent is also a little unusual, but that's what the bylaw says is the criteria for this special permit. And so we had to submit with the application a letter from Mike Borselli, Thelmath Engineering, that says that we're not going to increase the stormwater runoff, we're not going to increase the soil loss from the site, there won't be any. Now, this proposed deck, which creates the additional lot coverage, is above this driveway, which has a hard-packed surface, was paved, starting to get, has for some time, and starting to get grown over. But it is not a pervious surface and the engineering department had recommended that we could improve the situation by putting in gravel underneath the deck, and we are willing to do that. The only construction in the ground are just the sonotubes for support of the deck. It's a total of, estimated by Borselli, to be sixty-eight square feet, much less than one percent of the size of the lot. So the upshot is that there will be no adverse impacts on, in terms of stormwater runoff. The slope is away from the street. There'll be no adverse impacts in terms of soil loss. And we did provide the traffic calculations using the I T E rates for a restaurant of the proposed size and calculated the frontage, multiplied it by four according to the bylaw, and the number of trips per day per the I T E rates is less than four trips per day for the seventy-four feet of frontage. Why that's a criteria for a lot coverage issue is beyond me. I don't think any of you were on the planning board or in town meeting when that old bylaw was passed, but that's, that's what it says. So we're talking about, for this special permit, a small increase in lot coverage and no adverse impacts from having this deck be that extra three hundred and fourteen square feet with the seventy-three point eight percent total lot coverage by structure. I'd point out that the percentage of lot coverage that's allowed by right in the Business One District, overall lot coverage, pavement, parking, so on, is ninety percent. And we are way below that because there isn't any other pavement on the site that would get added into, and we're not planning parking on the site. So this is lot coverage for structure, but it's a one-story open, open deck. Now, without that three point eight percent, we could have a smaller deck and we would lose four tables. Four tables would be serviced by a single waitstaff person. And that'd be the impact of not allowing this. There's no reason not to allow this special permit in terms of all the criteria that I've mentioned. In terms of suitability of the site for restaurant use and so on, of course, Business One, Main Street, the criteria I've just discussed go to drainage issues, we're on the town sewer, so all the various criteria of what used to be two forty two sixteen and now is two forty twelve one E are met for a special permit.
Bob, I have a procedural question. I had thought we were going to go forward with the site plan review, in which case trash removal would come up as part of that.
Chair.
If we were now, we're going in a different order, and we're talking about the special permit first. If we were to exceed favorably on the special permit but have not finished the rest of the business, where would that put us?
If you, if you decide on the special permit, you can then move to the site plan review application, which you would be able to discuss the trash removal and access to the site, circulation, et cetera. So the special permit essentially, as Attorney Almen just discussed, allows them to exceed the lot coverage by three point, well, say, four percent. If you don't allow-
But obtaining, obtaining the special permit doesn't give them a leg up toward approval of their site plan, does or does not?
Well, if you don't allow, or if you don't approve the special permit, they would have to reduce the size of the deck. And so that would modify the site plan review application. They would have to revise the plan.
And that's the only effect it would have.
Yes, yes, that's my understanding.
Seriously, I think reducing the size of the deck would create a little bit of the danger of the gap between the edge of the deck and the beginning of the stone wall.
Well, if the deck were decreased in size so that it was only seventy percent, then I believe the portion of the deck that would be removed would be in the rear. It wouldn't be the, the width of the-
It would be cut off the back.
Now, I had not anticipated, and I don't expect, the Board of Appeals to make a decision on the special permit without further dealing with the site plan review. And I would suggest that we talk about site plan review issues, which I also think are special permit issues in terms of suitability of the site and so on, that we continue with that discussion now, leaving the discussion of the special permit open for now. You'll do something with it tonight, whether it's to close it, vote on it, continue. You'll do something with it, but I think we should move to site plan review, back to that, because it, the similar issues affect the special permit. And I was about to say that, of course, the elephant in the room is the issue of access rights in the area where the deck is proposed, and access rights that need to be exercised by the restaurant to have the trash be collected and picked up in the rear as has been the case and, and as is proposed. So that's what I'd like to talk about next, is those, all those issues.
Is the board comfortable with just continuing the, the special permit discussion and moving to the site plan application?
Madam Chair, if I may, you, you may want to take public comment on the special permit application before you move on.
Before. Okay, because we would be coming back to it. Let's-
Well, that, if I may, Madam Chairman-
Yeah.
-that makes perfect sense if you're limiting the discussion and the public comment to the issues we've talked about, which are just relative to the special permit. But if we're going to open up the discussion to broader issues, then perhaps I should continue my presentation.
So the question is, if any member of the public who's here upon this issue wants to talk about, just about the issue of a special permit for the extended coverage?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, women, and the board. Can you all hear me? I get a little confused with the mic. Can I be heard? Okay. So I'm looking at the agenda. I'm just a little bit, I need a little bit of clarity here because we, I believe, we have a public meeting on this Blue Moon One Class, Class One restaurant on the agenda. And then we have a public hearing on the special permit application. So did that get switched around and now we're having a hearing on the seventy-three percent lot coverage? Just want to be clear.
We are having a hearing on the seventy-three percent lot coverage.
Thank you.
That's what we're doing.
And then we will move back to the meeting?
Meeting, right.
So on the seventy-three point eight percent lot coverage, my client's concern, I'm Mary Downey, and my clients are the condominium in the rear of Main Street at one thirty-seven Main. We were here eight weeks ago and we discussed this aspect of putting a permanent structure on a way. And any permanent structure on the way will extinguish what has been a one-hundred-year way system. And this, it's two ways from Main Street and one going behind Main Street, all different owners. Presently, my clients strongly object to any obstruction of that way. And they object legally and they object practically. Common sense tells you that you need to have access. Also, the, the first requirement for a site, well, for the site plan review is that there be access, but we're, we're just on the special permit for lot coverage.
Right.
Okay. So our objection is that that is not something that this board can decide to extinguish a way, that that is something for a court to decide.
We're talking now about the size of the deck that may or may not be put there. That's all we're talking about now, and it's going to increase coverage by a marginal amount. Do you want to comment on that?
Because it's extinct, that lot coverage, that additional lot coverage is extinguishing a way, and I think I don't see how you can allow for a plan that extinguishes a way.
I hear your point.
We're not doing site plan review, though. We're getting really confused here.
Yep.
Well, yeah, if we had followed the, the agenda that-
We voted to take it out of order and-
Yeah.
We started the meeting that way.
I, I see that as, I see her point that, you know, if you're-
We're going to talk about the next meeting.
No, if you're talking about adding space to the structure.
The three hundred feet we're talking about.
Right, right. If you're talking about that-
Okay.
-then to me, it's, the site plan and that coincide.
No, she's right. They're definitely involved together, and I understand that they're involved together. So I understand you as objecting to the request for the special permit. You would prefer that the board reject it.
I would prefer that the board reject it or that the board, or my clients, would agree to continue or to have the-
Pam? We, we can hear you. Are you intending us to hear you at this time?
No, I'm not. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay, thank you. Go forward, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Or that the applicants could withdraw, my clients would agree to that without prejudice, and come back with a different site plan. That the going beyond and making a decision tonight, to me, doesn't take all of the concerns into being-
I can see why you would say that. I understand your point.
Yeah.
But it's just a little off the point, now that we've reversed the order in which we're doing it.
Yeah.
Wait till we get back on the meeting and we're discussing the site plan.
Okay, so the-
It'd be more useful.
All right.
Doesn't, doesn't hurt your position at all.
For you to allow the extra lot coverage on the way.
No, you're deciding that that's enough, you've made your point and can sit down, doesn't hurt your position.
Okay. Now, I'm not sure if my, any of the public or my clients want to address this any further, but I do have one other thing about this being a permanent structure with those tubes that are talked about. Those are the sonic, I'm not-
Yeah, sonotubes.
Those, those are there, you know, for a long time. That's, that requires, those are required for permanency.
Thank you.
So we'll get back to the rest.
Any other members of the public on only this narrow point? Thank you. Bob, did you wish to speak?
Thanks. I, I anticipated by taking the special permit up first that all the issues that relate to site plan review could be relevant to a special permit, and we would be discussing everything. And after a discussion of all the issues and input from everybody here, some of which you've heard, but not all certainly, you'd be able to take action on the special permit and take action on the site plan review. And I'm not saying decide those tonight, that would be nice if you're ready, but I wasn't anticipating that this was going to create a problem in the breadth of the discussion.
But it has.
Apparently.
It has. So I think that we'd be best off deciding to continue the issue of the special permit and move back on the agenda for the public meeting to discuss the site plan, because then we all know what we're talking about better. It's just clearer. I mean, always an effort to make things abbreviated is appreciated, but it just made it confusing.
It might be that you want to table the discussion rather, I'm not sure whether continuing it right now is what you mean to do, and I'm not sure of this, rather than table it to be taken up later in this, later this night.
Potentially. Pat?
Well, we could table it and take it up again, or we could continue it.
Whichever you'd rather, make a motion.
I think I'd rather continue it. I move that we continue the special permit discussion.
Is there a second?
Does that continue to another day or continue to later on this evening?
You would, if you're continuing it, it would be to the next meeting of your, of the board, which would be January tenth.
Okay, so then-
You'd rather?
I don't want to continue to another meeting.
But you do not.
And I will rescind that motion.
We're here, but we're going to talk about tonight.
I will rescind that motion and move that we table the issue.
Table it until the discussion on the site plan is complete, and then we'll return to it. Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Bob? Aye?
Yeah, aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chad, yes?
Cat, aye.
All, Pam?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving to, back on our agenda, to the site plan application to develop a Class One restaurant with outdoor deck located at one fifty-nine Main Street. And this is the continuation of a discussion. So the points that you've already made, and we've received letters from you, thank you very much for taking the time to clarify your thoughts, to write to us, to let us know how strongly you feel, that's really very helpful to the board, so thank you for that. So please assume that we did read those, and now we will move on on the site plan application. So Bob, did you want to speak for the applicant?
I do, thank you very much. And I also want to note that, of course, the Board of, the Planning Board takes into account a site plan review in making a special permit decision. So I think that the discussion about site plan review could be taken into account by the board members later tonight or whenever the special permit is taken up again. Attorney Downey has already stated tonight her belief, her client's belief, that there is a right of way where this deck is proposed, and that characterized what the applicants want to do as extinguishing that way. We would only be extinguishing a right of way if the neighbors, the condominium owners and others have a right, have a right of way. We maintain that they do not. We have no question whatsoever that they do not have deeded rights. We've tried to make this clear in our correspondence, we've submitted statements about that, copies of title, title information and so on. There is no deeded right of way. There are claims that the property has, that the way has been used for one hundred years. In order to have a right of way, they need to prove in a court of law that there has been continuous and uninterrupted use of a way for twenty years or more. The burden is on the party claiming a prescriptive easement to establish it in court. If it is determined that there is a right of way enjoyed by the condominium owners, and I note that those parties who do have record rights have both signed off on this proposal, recorded licenses at the Registry of Deeds. But if it's determined that the condominium, condominium unit owners have a right of way, well, then the court won't allow it to be blocked. If there's a right of way, if there's a prescriptive easement, we're not proposing, we won't block it, we can't. But that is for the court to determine. There is no right of way established at this time.
Right, so that's not under the jurisdiction of this board.
That is our opinion, that is our opinion. Attorney Downey will tell you, she has told you, that if there isn't a right of way where this deck is proposed, then my clients, the, who are tenants of one fifty-nine Main Street, then they can't access the rear of the property across the driveway that's part of the La Civetta Restaurant property owned by Daybon LLC. And my response to that is, this is apples and oranges. The facts are different, the proposed use is different. All we need that access for is the trash truck, and it's the same use that's been going on for decades and decades. And we will be able to prove that. We hope to reach an amicable agreement to confirm that right, and that limited use anyway, with the owners of that access from Main Street. It's a different situation than with, than the claims which have not been established for twenty years. And in any, any case, if you can't, we can't reach an amicable agreement, then the only way to establish that, if it's necessary, would be to go to court. I point out that the owner of the property that is in between La Civetta Restaurant and one fifty-nine Main Street, that's McDonald Properties LLC, the one forty-five Main Street property, has agreed in writing to allow the use of his, of his property for limited use, including the trash collection. And we've submitted that to the-
So could you just describe, if you've got the, a written agreement with the owner of half the easement, is that the way that would work out?
No, no, no.
We're talking about the alleyway there.
I don't think we have a plan that unfortunately shows this, the whole area back there, it'd be great if we did. But you've been back there.
Uh huh.
The brick building is one forty-five Main Street. There is, of course, a significant area that extends from the rear of the building to the property line that's in the south. That is the property line that adjoins the two-unit, one thirty-seven Main Street condominium. Seven and a half feet of that property is part of a fifteen-foot-wide right of way that is shared by those two properties, by one thirty-seven and one forty-five. So they have a right to go on, to travel on each other's property within that fifteen feet or seven and a half feet on each side. McDonald has granted an easement that, or, sorry, he has agreed to grant a license. He has agreed in writing to grant a license. We will negotiate all of that if we're able to proceed with this project. But we have his written agreement to, to grant a license on his property. He does not have the authority to grant permission to us to go on the abutting property. But he has permission, has the right, to give us the right to use the seven and a half feet plus whatever else on his property we negotiate. There may be prescriptive easements, prescriptive rights to use both halves of that 15-foot-wide way, if that's where the trash truck has, has gone over the years. But we're not dependent on anything but the McDonald property to be able to have the trash emptied by a truck that's coming onto that property anyway, through the La Civetta driveway anyway, to empty the trash of all of the businesses on Main Street that back up onto that alley. And that is the same use, the same trucks, the same company that has been removing trash from a dumpster on the 159 Main Street property for years and years and years. So there is no increase in use proposed, no change in use, no overburdening of whatever easements there, there may be. We come back to the fact that these are somewhat complex legal issues that may end up having to be decided by a court, though we hope not. But what the Planning Board can do is condition an approval. That's conditioned on our being able to remove the trash in the method that we're proposing that has been going on for decades. And if a court says we can't do it, we won't be able to comply with the, with the permit. And why would a court say we can't do it? That would be if a court decides, in the course of litigation, that there are, that there are not rights to access that. But we're pretty confident, given the limited nature of the use that we need, given the certainty that it's gone on for more than 20 years, that we have those rights. And we've already got an agreement with McDonald to work with us on that. And we're hopeful to have an agreement with the owner of La Civetta to be able to do that as well. But it makes sense for us to have the special permit rather than spend years in court and then come back and find that we don't get the special permit. The special permit should be granted, conditioned on our being able to empty the trash in the, in the rear and maintain a dumpster there.
Be accurate to say, Bob, because we did go on the site visit, most of us did that. And while we were on the site visit there, you stated that the deliveries to the restaurant of, of food and things you need in order to serve people and run a restaurant, the restaurant deliveries will be made from Main Street if they are for the other restaurants.
Correct, or from Town Hall Square.
Right, so that, they're not going to be needing to drive down to the back of that building.
We're not proposing any restaurant deliveries or removals other than trash. And we're not proposing any parking.
Is it fair to say that the restaurant is likely to create more trash than what has been there in the past?
Well, it does, won't necessarily be more, more trips by the truck. It may be a, a larger dumpster to do that. And that would, that would cover that issue. And we can improve the situation back there by screening the dumpster. Our proposal, if the deck is installed, would be to locate the dumpster between, in this area. Again, if the deck is here, there won't be anybody accessing this. We would put the dumpster in this area, put some fencing across here to screen it. We also are proposing to just improve the appearance of the rear. Now, remember, this is the rear of Main Street, but there's some overgrown vegetation. Some of the buildings could use some freshening up. And, and as shown on the plan, the landing and stairs would be replaced, so those would be improvements, but we can also screen the trash, which I think is an improvement.
Okay, I think...
With a larger dumpster, there shouldn't be any additional trips.
Are there any more issues you want to bring forward?
And furthermore, furthermore, it isn't a question of whether there's going to be a restaurant with, with garbage. The, if there's no deck, the tenants, that's the Rashardis who are here, they plan to have a restaurant, have a, have a restaurant there. And the occupancy could be up to 88 inside. Their plans with the deck are for 74 seats inside and 56 on the deck for a total of 130 seats. But there will be a restaurant. And so in terms of impacts and all kinds of impacts, they're not going to be a lot different, whether there's a, a deck or not. It's just going to be a better restaurant in terms of being able to serve more people and in a very enjoyable deck in a perfect location for it. That's going to improve the entrance to Town Hall.
Okay, you could come back and say more if you want to later, but let's hear from the people who have come here to listen and probably wish to comment.
I would like the opportunity to say a few more words later.
Yes, you do, you'll have that opportunity.
We just, we have a few things we'd like to put up tonight. This is Abby. She's my assistant.
I'd just like to say a couple of things if I could, while we're getting the slide deck up. On the McDonald agreement, I have a copy of that. It is not truly an agreement. It has signatures from Mr. Lawrence McDonald and Gregory McDonald. Right now, the LLC is, Lawrence McDonald is the managing member, I believe. And it's not a license. It's a, and it looks like something that was prepared for them because you, you have a copy of this.
You're not speaking into the microphone, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. Now, could you just move your whole body right over near?
I will, as soon as, okay. So that's the, sorry, the artist rendering. I think the next one, yes.
I think you need to be closer.
I think, will they come in if they can't hear me?
They'll come back in the door to wave that you're not doing it right.
Okay.
If you walk right over so that the microphone is right against your mouth.
I have, I have quite a, a big voice. I can make sure that I'm heard, I believe. You can see that this, anyway, to, to the McDonald issue, it's, it's not signed by any parties. It's not a contract. It's not an agreement other than he states that he will, that he has agreed to grant something. But it's a conveyance of land and given...
I think it was characterized as an agreement to agree.
Right, it's, but there's no other parties to this agreement. It's one LLC. So this is a, let's see, a 1948 aerial photograph of the site. And it's taken from Benjamin Harris, Harrison of Pecasset, from the archives at the Falmouth Museum. And at the very top, you can see the Eastman's Bill, Eastman's Building, the Masonic Lodge, Shiverick's Pond, and the post office. The old schoolhouse here, where now Town Hall begins on, on Main Street. Structurally, the back of the site between 131 Main Street and 159 Main Street is parallel to, to is, the two ways and, okay, the two ways entering one...
We've all been there. I think we can pick it out in the photograph.
Okay, you, you can see it.
Yeah.
So, and really, it's quite a great photograph because there's a car coming down along the way. You can see that there's another road sort of that goes around the old schoolhouse. There's a truck in the back of...
Excuse me, I think that the way that you're pointing to isn't on the property that we're discussing. The way that we're talking about is tight against... Very tight. The little building up...
Is there a building missing in this picture?
No, it's there.
Nope, everything is there. That's what's so great about this photograph. Hollands is there, the, the Vin, the old Vincent building is there. And right tied up against there is a, is an automobile.
We have GIS maps. You could show it what's there, satellite right now and straighten this out.
Well, we can show you what's there right now, too. But we want to show you that this historically has had trucks entering, the, the Huens Way comes down, and then the La Civetta Way comes down, and they all were able to pass and repass from the two ways and, and across the back. And I, I just want to say that if we don't have prescriptive rights on the Huens Way, then Bogosian does not have prescriptive rights on what was the McKee Way.
But here is a problem with going forward in this way. We don't have any jurisdiction over that. That's not something that's going to be decided by this board.
Okay, that's...
It isn't, that's...
That's background.
If you want to pursue it, you need to go to court where...
I think that Ms. Attorney Ament has addressed it, so I believe it's fair that I should be able to address it.
Well, it is, but I think we understand your point. And we also know we, we are not a source of relief for what you want. I'm sorry that that's all for you, but that is where we are.
Okay, and you know that already as a board because I, I'm concerned...
No, we just know it is in our jurisdiction. We don't do ownership. That's not what we do.
Okay.
Isn't that right?
Yep, Madam Chair, that is correct. And I think that what would likely be the outcome, if, if I were so inclined, is to indicate that in your eventual decision, you would condition certain aspects of this approval on, you know, satisfactory legal outcome of property, you know, private property right dispute, if you want to call it that.
Isn't that tying them into paying for a court suit that they might not have to otherwise endure?
Well, it, it will be completely up to the board because it is your decision. But we would recommend that you make some sort of finding or condition indicating that there's a potential question here that needs to be answered outside of your jurisdiction.
That would be better. I'm going to make a note of that.
So the, the businesses and residents, because Margaret McKee had a residence here in the, in the back, all functioned well with this system of ways. And what's happening now is with this application, Mr. Bogosian is requesting and, and the applicants, Blue Moon, are requesting that what is theirs is theirs and what is, what belongs to someone else is also theirs. But they are denying that what they have is also something, and this just goes to the idea of prescriptive easement. There, you, you can't take away from someone and burden someone else in order for your site plan to work. And, and that is really the, mainly what we have to object to. I know you also base opinions on various letters that come in and on, on petitions. So I looked at the signatures on the petitions, and the petitions are irregular at least in that there are no dates. There are many with signatures, and most of the signatures are East Falmouth, not local people downtown here. And I also would just bring your attention to the abutters list. And I do have some problems with the abutters list in this matter, and that I question whether an abutter has the right to vote on this matter. If you have an abutter on the board, which I believe you do when I went through your abutters list, I brought it to the attention...
He's not listed on the list.
Was he a butter? I'm an abutter?
His own, the person who owns the building, you lease.
I'm a tenant.
Yes, so you're, the owner is on the list, you are not.
I'm a tenant in the neighborhood.
Okay, well, your building is in the, in the abutter, on the abutters list. And I do have, I wouldn't think that you would want my clients as abutters voting on this matter if they were on the board. So I, I, when I came eight weeks ago, I had very little time to prepare. And I came up with a theory of this case. And eight weeks later and a few thousand pages later, I have the same theory. This project is too big for the space. We encourage restaurants, we encourage businesses. You relied, Madam Chair, on the Chamber of Commerce letter recently that was amended by Mr. Casparian and that the fact that this project extinguishes a way, he retracted his full-on support as it affects the rights of others. How, and like us, we think a restaurant is great and a restaurant is terrific for that area, but not at the expense of the rights of others.
I think we should be clear about what Mr. Casparian wrote about.
Yes, would, could we read it?
Right here. If you'd like. It's in the final paragraph of that letter.
Would someone like to, okay, I'll, I'll read the final paragraph. Can I get to that? "It is our hope that the parties will be able to resolve any conflict and that an arrangement which benefits both parties will be arrived at. As the chamber supports our local businesses, we do not do so at the expense of private citizens and want to ensure that our well-intentioned endorsement is understood by all the stakeholders involved." And that's what I represented to the board.
Right, but I think just above it, he's saying why he wrote his second letter here. "They continue to enthusiastically support the right-of-way at the time we submitted our original letter, followed up with Blue Moon Sea Grill attorney Bob Amant who advised. He was also not aware of the possible conflict which this situation may create at the time his client asked the chamber to write a letter supporting the project. And I believe the issue that he was raising was that of ownership and that it was a legal issue, and he didn't want to find himself embroiled in it. Is that accurate?"
That's accurate. He still continues to enthusiastically support the addition.
The addition of a restaurant, but not at the expense of the private citizens. And that's everyone in town. That's everyone who has to pass by and manage getting through that part of town, that they, and I, my letter this week said to you that they will be lugging in everything from Main Street. Every other restaurant doesn't do that. I have been neighbors to many other restaurants, and they have side areas. There's a lot of problem here with saying it's only going to be trash removal. And Diane Salter's letter that you received this week, too, it looks like maybe it's an email. It states that for 42 years, that way was used by her and others. So that is enough to establish...
Where's that letter?
The, this one here. It was dated October 27th. It's been talked about since I was here, October 24th. And she says... And she says...
Is it say 40? Okay. Michelle, once again, we're on something that this board can't deal with. So we need to stick to the issues over which we do have jurisdiction. Very much so. So unless you have something further to say, there might be others who wish to speak.
Well, I think where you had some... Maybe we can go to some of those rear photographs. Okay, well...
Jim, do you want to speak up?
That's just a typical day, blocking the way at La Civetta so that the parties have to use the other side on a regular basis. And that's another one in the same spot. And how about the rear? And this is the rear that we're talking about. This is a regular day, or actually, it's a day in December, so it's not a summer day. But there is no space to get through here.
So your point is that the alleyway is narrow, often it's blocked by trucks, and it's congested at the rear. We saw that on the site visit.
And I think you also saw that you came right down that way and that there was no one to stop you from coming down that way. And you parked right in front of the condominium.
I did.
You did. And so it's shared. No one stopped you. It doesn't say, "Do not enter." Those ways have been open, and Diane Salter says, for 42 years. She used all of them.
And I believe Mr. Amen's statement is they're going to continue to use them as they have.
With one gone. How can they do that?
See that letter?
By extinguishing one way, you just create chaos, front and back. Well, let's see. Does anyone else have anything they would like to add now? And see if we can keep it on the subject. Oh, yeah, that's a good one. You can leave that up and see. Do you want to stay with Richie and Casey?
Thank you.
Dear Board members, or members of the Board, excuse me, for the record, my name is Richie Metha. I've gone through some of this speech before. I am a business owner on Main Street. And we've been looking directly across the street at the 159 property for 28 years. We're closing in on almost 50 years on Main Street. So I was a little kid when I started here. As a business owner, I welcome business to the street. I really like these guys, you know. But as a landowner, we're just afraid that this is going to burden our way. The fear is that, you know, all the extra congestion it's going to add. It's a very limited way, you know, the deliveries, the drop-offs. It's going to be an increased nuisance. And people are going to encroach on our land. It's very limited parking spaces. And there's fear as they grow in that there's going to be more of that. You know, we've stated, you know, our driveway gets blocked five to 15 times daily, and that's five to 20 minutes. I know Bob has addressed in his letter that we should call the police. We have. The only problem is it takes quite some time to get the police down there to get things moving. So it's something we've tried to do. So, you know, we, as the previous owners in the past, have relied on that right-of-way to get out for those circumstances. We are very fearful that removing the way, which is classified as a fire lane with the town engineers, excuse me, would prevent adequate access for safety to all properties involved. We were told by the outgoing owners of 137 that there was an easement in place. And I think what cemented that was that they were approached by the Bogosian group in buying those rights back. We have supplied their very strong-worded letter in opposition to that right-of-way being removed. As a current member of the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, I personally spoke to Michael Casperian regarding the previous endorsement of the project and wanted to highlight what he amended in his endorsement, excuse me. He said that the chamber does not want to promote business at the cost of private citizens' rights. I know that is... His previous letter carried a lot of weight with the planning board. So we have gone forward and collected, we started a petition and collected 60 signatures very quickly. And the main concern is that the precedent this may set. And we will continue to collect signatures as we go. You know, like I said, I'm torn because I do welcome business in town. But I do see the lack of adequate access creating a serious infringement on our property. And I think our stance is let us go figure it out and then come back to you for the judgment if the plan will work or not. You know, we do have rights and interest in that way. So thank you very much again, Richie Metha, 137 Main Street.
Mr. Metha, when you say "us," who do you mean?
So I'm talking about Meg and Dave and Linda Samortis here, the 137 property. So those are the people that I refer into as "us."
You wouldn't be involving any of the people who, at this point, don't agree with you?
I'm sorry?
Would you be involving any of the people of the Blue Moon Grill in your conversation to work it out?
Well, yes, we're going to have to figure it out. If that means going to court to figure it out, that's, you know, the road we'll have to go.
Madam Chair, mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
You mentioned there was a petition. Did you say there were 60 signatures?
Yes, we...
What did the petition say?
Sure. Do we have it?
That's a lot of people on very few abutters.
That is something that we will supply to you today. We have... We will have to... I'm sorry, we'll have to supply that for you.
Meg can...
Yeah, sure. Meg, you want to handle it?
There's only a handful of abutters.
The petition that we will supply to you, the petition is... I'm sorry, Mary, do you want to read this?
Sure.
If I haven't practiced it, I'm going to fumble. Sorry.
No problem. Okay. Here's the petition form, and it is... "This petition is to express our opposition to the Falmouth Planning Board and Z B A Application 07522 by the tenant Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc. and landowner Bogosian, LLC, to allow a special permit and total waiver of parking requirements, including the construction of a permanent structure extinguishing a 100-year-old way located at 159 Main Street." And it gives the map number 47A0707000. "Approval of the site plan would permit excessive lot coverage of 73.8% along the southeast side to the existing building adjacent to Town Hall Square, blocking rear access for residents and employees with a 130-seat restaurant and bar for a special permit and parking waiver." And the applicant, the abutters, started this petition, I think, Saturday. And they have six... I don't know all total what they have. But, you know, they were a little bit behind on what made sense, what you needed as a board. But they have signatures, addresses, and date. And they have printed names as well that are legible. And if you would like, we'll get you copies of these. But I don't know if... Or you can have what we have so far.
I would suggest if you're referencing it at the meeting tonight, that you give us a copy of what you have thus far.
So I think we have a few other pages, do we? Yep.
Jim?
My only objection is she keeps referencing the extinguishing of the rights. And I think that's a totally separate issue. And I think if you came to me and said, "Would you sign this? They're taking away my rights for 100 years." And you were right on that, I think that would be wrong. But you haven't proved that yet. So how can people sign a petition for a fact that isn't in evidence? Just that you've claimed that it is.
Well, how can you accept the petition? How can you accept the petition that has been presented to you that is irregular and doesn't have people's, the date that they signed? And you've counted them all as something that...
What petition are we talking about? I didn't even see...
In your...
It's all part of the file.
It's all part of the file.
We don't refuse things from a file. If people wish to send us something, we don't refuse it. We don't base our judgments on it. At least, we're certainly not supposed to. We base our judgments on how well the applicant corresponds with our bylaws. That's all we really have jurisdiction over.
Okay, but I do not understand how you can approve a site plan that is asking for an overage on a piece of property that is not just theirs alone. And we do have a deed that highlights that others are allowed to use that way. And that's the Huens deed, and I believe it's 1946. But there's enough controversy here that we're being told, as the abutters, or my clients are being told, that they must prove. I think the onus should be on the applicant to prove that they have a right to extinguish this way and that they have a right to use La Civetta's way, which they cannot prove to you. They do not have any deeded rights to La Civetta.
Okay, I think we've gone as far as we're going to go with that particular argument because we do not have jurisdiction over it. So thank you. I appreciate your point. You need to take it somewhere where they do have jurisdiction because we don't. We'll decide this based on the things that concern this board. That's all we can do. Bob, did you want to speak?
I'd like to speak.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Jerry Millitt, one of the co-owners of 137 Main Street. Even tonight, Mr. Amen referenced driveway alleyway way. That's what it is. There's a cut granite wall there delineating it that someone put in. It's all on town property. You saw the picture from 1946 with trucks going in and out. We bought the house from Charlie Marzat and Kerry Marzat. I have the text message here from Charlie Marzat, which I'll put into record, that they were approached by Bogosian to buy the rights to that deeded right-of-way. I don't know what else you... You say it isn't your jurisdiction, but if they don't have access to the back of the restaurant, how can you approve something that they don't have access to?
That's what we want to know. We're interested in that question.
Yeah, I mean, how can you do it? Osteria La Civetta has put up opposition. They have a road that doesn't work right. I mean, if you go over it, they've had to repair it. I was made aware that they were repairing it. So I actually maintained the Huens way. I went in with my weed whacker and cut it all down so I could drive my car out for two days while it was out of commission. When Civetta was doing work on her place, she bought gravel. She filled in the potholes because they told her she had to. That has been used for numerous years. And we have a picture showing trucks going in and out of it. I don't know what else you need, but I will give you the text message. And also, when Mr. Amen was asked, will the usage go up? Of course, 120-person restaurant is going to make more garbage than a real estate office. And the fact that he couldn't say, "Yes, there will be more," I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Meg Maggio, also co-owner of 137 Main Street. To me, this is not a legal issue. And I'm very sorry that it's sort of turned into a legal issue. For me, it's very simple. It's a neighborhood issue. I don't understand how any business owner can appropriate property which is used by a neighborhood for their own business use and that's going to block us in, in the rear of a building. We're going to not have access. They're going to block a road and take a road which is used for a neighborhood for private use for one business. And I don't understand why we have to prove that that blockage, that we are not interested parties, that we are not abutters, we have been omitted and ignored from the beginning all the way through this process, as though we don't exist, as though we don't have sanitation and fire and safety issues. All of that can be extinguished so that one company can run a new business on Main Street. A whole neighborhood's going to be affected adversely by putting in this deck. And everyone knows it. And there's a huge trash burden. And your Town Hall Square is going to become a delivery center. And your Town Hall Square is going to become a burden for parking. They are going to use your Town Hall Square for the parking for their 140 restaurant people, not including their 40 employees. And there's no additional burden on trash delivery? There's no additional burden on the neighborhood? You've got to be kidding me. There's a clear burden. This is not a legal issue. This is a fairness issue, a community issue. And you are changing the face of Main Street by allowing this deck to go in. Thank you.
Will the point that you're going to make be different from the ones you've made before?
I'm sorry?
Will your point be any different from the points that you've made before?
Probably not. I've been there for 12 years.
Right.
Seeing the traffic. Would you like to move on?
I know what's on your mind. I think that we all do.
I'm sure you all do.
Yeah, we do. Mr. Amen? Thank you.
Yeah, leave that there. I'd like to say a couple of things about the parking and the waiver that, of course, is actually requested of the Board of Appeals. Yesterday, I parked in the town lot off of Depot Avenue that runs along the bike path. And I walked to Town Hall Square. I parked at the far end of that lot off Simpson Lane and walked to Locust Street. And walking that way to Town Hall from that 100-car parking lot that's never used, or not much anyway, took me exactly eight minutes. This morning, I walked from the other end of that parking lot down Depot Avenue, and it took me seven and a half minutes to get to 159 Main Street. It is entirely reasonable to think that the restaurant can arrange for its staff... Now, there may be exceptions, people sick or handicapped or something. But for most people, to not park downtown. And we don't even need a shuttle service with that kind of access. It's not a long walk, and young waitstaff probably walk a lot faster than I do. I do think that's important to point out. There's plenty of parking available. And we don't think that this restaurant is going to make that much of a difference. And the additional parking related to the deck, because there'll be a restaurant there anyway, is not significant. There's so many inaccuracies that have been stated. I mean, we start with this deed. We cite... Attorney Downey is saying that their rights are based on a deed... Attorney Downey is saying that their rights are based on a deed for other property. It happens to be a deed to the property where the coin shop is. And it talks about a strip which is on the 159 property. And it says the use can't interfere with the use of, other uses of, the Huen's block. That's the 149 Main Street property. Or others entitled to use said nine-foot strip. Others entitled to use it. That language, I assure you, does not, is not sufficient to create rights, merely referring that if there's anybody else, if there are others, they have a right to do it. If that's the best they can do for their deeded access, well, it isn't. So, just tonight, they have repeated over and over again, everybody who spoke about their rights. And as I've said already, and basically as the chamber said, if they have the rights, well, you can't do this. I don't disagree with that. But they haven't proven 20 years of continuous uninterrupted use of the way. And that's what they would need to do. The chamber's letter was obtained mainly with respect to the parking issue. What the chamber is saying is they didn't think that another restaurant would be a burden on Main Street. That's what, that's what their letter says. And the, Mr. Casperian's amendment to the letter say, "Hey, you know, if you're blocking someone's way, you know, we can't support that." And we're not arguing for that. But there isn't, there isn't a right of way. It hasn't been proven, that's for sure. I can't tell you what a court will do. I don't know what all the evidence will be. But so far, there isn't any evidence of that required use. And the photo that was shown, it's a really interesting photo. It doesn't show us where the trucks came from. It doesn't show us what the use of, for 20 years, any 20-year period was. It was taken before the coin shop was built, so that the turning radius is very, very different to use it. No fire truck is going to pull into that, that alley. A fire truck will not--
Bob, do you happen to know where it is cited as a fire lane?
I didn't say so. And if the engineering department calls it a fireway, that doesn't mean a fire truck is ever gonna pull into that, right next to a building, that it might be working a fire. And they certainly will not be able to take a turn out of it.
No question.
I spoke to, if I may, I spoke to a member of the, Boyd DeMello, who routinely provides referrals to the planning board from the Fire Department. He indicated that the way, so describe this correctly, the way in which, the way that the applicant is proposing to block with the deck, a fire truck would never go down that way. But they have, in the past, gone down the other way to access the back portion where the condo owners exist, where the structure for 137 made. He said he has driven back down there in the past. And if needed, they would go down there again. For the record.
So I just mentioned a few of, I have a list of about 10, and there are many more, of just inaccuracies that have been given to--
But let's, let's stick to the things that deal with this board, not with issues of ownership and easements and rights on that way, because those aren't things we can do anything about.
Sure, sure, that's perfectly fine. I'll tell you, for instance, that at a previous hearing, a photo was shown of other restaurants with their parking. And one of those was the DJ's Famous Wings, which is, of course, over near Falmouth Plaza, across the street from that, which isn't even in the Business One district. It's just a totally different issue. We never represented, as has been claimed, that we would have deliveries behind the building or parking. We suggested at a meeting that, "Well, but you're showing a loading dock." No, there's no loading dock shown. There is a landing shown at the top of the new stair, stairways. Tonight, a photo was submitted for the second time, or shown for the second time, that shows the congestion behind the building. Why can't you get through there? Because there's a car, a condominium unit owner's car, parked in the right of way. You can't park in a right of way. And then, and then show a picture of it and say, "Look how congested it is, you can't get through, because you've parked in a right of way." So, these are, there are just so many examples of misrepresentation. There's a letter that you've received which said the way was blocked past La Civetta, and they went out the other way. And if they hadn't been able to, they wouldn't have been able to get out. I guess there was a fire, unfortunately. And said they'd be blocked by six-foot-high walls. There is, in fact, a path on the west side of the bowling alley and behind the coin shop that goes all the way out to the parking lot, right here next to my office, that you can take. And I walked on it today. I've walked on it many times. You can walk from behind La Civetta at grade onto the lawn of the Episcopal Church. There's no fence, the fence ends, there's no wall there. You can just walk out onto the lawn.
Up around that stone wall.
These are misrepresentations. I think they were maybe innocent, but there are so many of them in the presentations that have been made. And I'll just say again that the burden is on somebody claiming a prescriptive easement. If, if we--
Now you're repeating yourself.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's hear, any kind of response from the board? John?
I would like to see, at some point, a plan that would be conforming, that wouldn't require a special permit for this deck.
Say that again?
I'd like to see a plan that conforms for the deck that doesn't require a special permit. I'd like to see a drawing at some point.
Oh, see what it is.
I'd like to see what it would look like.
And your purpose is?
I would like to see what it would look like, that it would not require a special permit.
Would not, okay. Anything else?
No.
Right now, we can come back. Bob?
I don't know. To me, there's just too many conflicts with this. I can't comment on that right now.
Jim?
I remember us dealing with a very similar operation with a restaurant down the street where they put in a deck in the same, with the same parking lot. You were on the board then, too, if you remember. We agreed they leased space from Eastern Bank, and they put a deck on, and they accessed it from the exact same parking lot. And some of the same people here didn't hear any objections to that.
Excuse me? It didn't trap anyone? Excuse me? It didn't trap anyone, any of them?
That restaurant has dedicated parking. It has a huge parking lot. It's comparing apples and oranges. Estia has a dedicated parking lot. Austria has a dedicated parking lot. This restaurant has zero parking for 150 people.
But now, the board is gonna comment, and please, don't think that you can then, you know, speak right back to them. It just gets too disorderly. So that's, I appreciate your passion, but let's not do that. Pat?
Boy, am I torn on this. I am really very torn on it.
Because?
I understand the narrowness of the access that's claimed. I understand that it is blocked frequently by vehicles being parked there. If you have an access that is being blocked, it's no access. And I understand the comment that by the time you call the police, they're gone. So, a blockage, if the fire truck says, "I'm gonna go down there, and there's a fire, and they can't get in because somebody's parked there," what do they do? That's why I am so torn on this.
And you don't necessarily have to put a vehicle down a way. You run your equipment down there, your hose lines and things like that. So it isn't just vehicles that access fire lanes.
Right. So there, it's a very complex issue, and, woo, I'm really torn by it.
Yeah, I'm an attorney, so I don't know what the legal issues are, but I'm a little confused by the comparison of the two access areas. On the west side, we have an access that the owner of the property there for 42 years said it was rarely used. Sometimes the property owners used it, their tenants used it. Delivery trucks can't get down there. It's very difficult to make the turn there. Fire trucks, as we heard, cannot get down there. Dumpsters certainly cannot come out that route. So there's really no viable access there that was used the way it's been portrayed. On the other end, there is access that's been used by fire, been used by dumpsters frequently, and the tenants as well. And we have a letter from Ms. Downey that says if the town approves the right of way there, they have the right to block the use over their property of the other right of way. I take that as a threat. I don't know if that's civil disobedience or legal or not. But that's not the way to work things out in the neighborhood. And I find that very disturbing to see that written.
That's an interesting point of view. Pam?
Yes? I'm very concerned that in all this time, this, quote, "neighborhood" has not gotten together to come up with some remedy to this. It's very difficult to follow both sides of the tail. And, you know, fire trucks can't go down, but they manage to get down. It gets blocked, but then it gets unblocked. And I think there's some element of truth on both sides. I just don't know which is the dominant side. And I wish that in all this time, the parties could have gotten together, sat down, and come up with a solution. And I'm unclear as to why that hasn't happened. And that's, that's very disturbing to me. If this has been going on for, I think the other attorney said, 100 years, or some lengthy period of time, and yet, I don't know legally who owns the property. I don't know what land court has done or said. And we have two attorneys who are both very articulate, very bright, very persuasive, but I don't know what the end result is. I can't make sense of it. Maybe it's because I'm just not a lawyer, but I am, that is the one. So, I, I'm as confused as I was during the very first presentation. I don't think there's been anything that's been settled.
Okay, um--
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, we have two issues here. We have site plan review, which we have criteria for. And we have a special permit, which we have criteria for that also.
Right.
It's really that simple.
It is.
The rest of it is, is not under our purview.
And that's hard to sort out.
So when we make our decisions, we're gonna make our decisions on site plan review criteria only, and the special permit only.
And you'd be the watchdog for that?
I have no problem with that.
Good.
Neither one.
Yeah, I'd like to say what I've been thinking. I was really persuaded by the argument that this is a neighborhood issue. I don't disagree with that, and the whole neighborhood has turned out consistently over this issue. That's true. But the fact that the whole neighborhood feels strongly about it doesn't really change the basis on which we have to make our decision. It's a shame that it's in conflict with the things over which we have some jurisdiction, but it is. I think it puts us in the position of making a really unpopular decision, which I really don't like to do. But if that's the way, the facts of the thing are based on the bylaws we're supposed to administer, then we'll just have to live with that. I am persuaded by John's argument that we ought to get a plan to show what it would be like if you didn't get the special permit you have asked for. I think that will do two things. It will give us more information, and it will slow this train down, which wouldn't be a bad thing right now. So we will probably be doing that. But I'm also persuaded, on the other hand, I can picture this, as you drive into Town Hall and over there to the side, instead of that sort of blank facade that's there. I think you've improved it some, but they haven't improved it a lot. But they're going to put a deck, there'll be tables, there'll be umbrellas, there'll be all that extra restaurant space. It's an attractive amenity for the town. It will help the town to develop as a real magnet for tourists. We can't be oblivious to that. That will be a help to the town. So there's really competing goods on both sides. And it happens that the bylaws seem to be on the side of the applicant's proposal. If, in fact, the trash has been going in and out of there, and all it takes is a bigger bucket to put it in, that's not a big change. That's not a change. That's an ongoing use, or so it would seem. Perhaps not. But I do think that waiting for the amended plan will give us all some time, board members' time, to be thinking about this. I think Paul's brought up something I hadn't seen before. That was a new way to read that. But this, this is leading us to a really unpopular decision so far. So, let's slow it down.
The main question I have is where the deck is going. Is that a right of way?
But that's not our criteria.
That's not--
Well, how can, no. If, we'll go to Central Ave, okay?
Yeah.
We had a right of way issue there. That homeowner could not build a house across that right of way. So how can you build something in a right of way? I mean, if that can be, if you can--
That was a deeded right of way.
It was a deeded right of way, but--
This may or may not be, because we can--
Well, that's the question. It's--
Is there a deed for it? Is anywhere, I haven't seen a deed--
But is it a prescriptive right of way because of use over 40, Diane Salt has had 42 years?
It's not our job.
Well--
We can condition it on the resolution of a potential question that needs to be decided outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
We accept that that's outside our jurisdiction, but we condition our decision on it. So that they don't have to come back here, they need to go somewhere else that has jurisdiction if they choose to invest in this issue in that way. But we're not forcing them to do that.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to remind the board that this is ultimately a site plan review, though you are considering a special permit. That is an opinion that is issued to the building commissioner, who would then ultimately have to issue a building permit for this byright use. So, you're providing an opinion to the board, or to the commissioner, as to your concerns about this legal issue. And that the building commissioner would need to take that into account when, if and when a building permit were to be applied for. And before issuing the building permit, would likely look to your referral, if you want to call it that, your opinion, your approval here, to wait, or perhaps make a decision on the building permit, subject to the legal question being answered. If, if it's not question or questions. So, just want to remind the board of that. I do have a couple of questions, if I may ask the applicant.
Yeah.
So, on the she A1, which is the floor plan for the actual restaurant itself, and it shows the outside deck, there are a set of stairs that lead from the deck to the back alleyway. And I was just asking, who might be able to use that? Would that be public use? Would that be just for staff? Is that secondary egress for the public, et cetera? And to that point, if they're going to fence off where the dumpster area is, would a member of the public be able to get through the fence?
There hasn't been a meeting of the minds, and I'll answer your question as best I can, with the neighbors and the applicant, because it's really been an all-or-nothing situation. situation. If there's going to be an exterior deck, probably if there's only going to be a handicap ramp, we're still going to make the right-of-way impassable by cars. And making the deck 300 square feet smaller isn't going to change it either. We actually have that plan. We prepared that plan. We can submit it. It shows that the deck just doesn't extend all the way to the rear. The dumpster would have a gate. It's wide enough to have a fence with a gate. Can the gate be locked or not locked? Either way, of course. The access, the rear access to the deck is not a way in which we would expect the public to enter the restaurant, or the restaurant deck. I'm sure that the people, greeting people, will not be positioned there. And the only people who have rights to be in back of that building are the tenants or owners of 153 through 159 Main Street, and Gelfi, who owns 149 Main Street, and the coin shop. Had no indication any of them need to come up, would want to come up those stairs. Now, if pedestrian access would be sufficient for the neighborhood, you know, I suppose you could come up on the deck, walk through the restaurant and to the Main Street, but it's so unnecessary. Why would, why would, why would that make sense? We could perhaps work with the town to have a set of stairs that go straight up to Town Hall Square behind where the deck is. And that would be pedestrian access through that alley into Town Hall Square. But I don't think that that's what the neighbors are looking for, pedestrian access. I don't know if I've answered your question. We don't, we really haven't thought through the public access up those stairs. There are required means of egress from the, from the deck. We have to have those stairs.
Yeah, the essence of the question is, if the gate to the dumpster is locked, obviously someone wouldn't be able to get out, and they would be trapped in that area behind the building.
Well, you could have it locked from one side with open from the other. I mean, if we get to the point where those are the details that need to be worked out, that'll be great.
Second question, if I may. So there's another set of stairs. If you could, could you call up that sheet A1?
I'll try.
Do you want me to help you?
Maybe I might need Melinda's help to reopen her package. Thanks, okay. You're starting to refer to this set of stairs with the label "New Landing"?
Right, correct.
Well, that would be egress from the kitchen area.
So staff only?
Of the restaurant.
Okay. So no public would be going back there at all?
No.
So is there, is there a reason for future use of the back end of the building? Meaning, does the, is there a need to get back to the rear of the building for any purpose for the restaurant?
The only use that is provided for in that agreement to grant a license, which by the way, is signed by Lawrence McDonald as manager of McDonald Properties LLC, and firming to Bogosian his willingness to give the license. But, you have to repeat your question. I went off on a tangent.
No, no, it's fine. Is there any reason for access to the rear of the structure, for the restaurant?
The only other use that, besides the dumpster, is, would be occasional access for maintenance or repair. The words in the document signed by McDonald are "construction, maintenance, and repair." That would be the, that would be the limit.
Could that be that use, or that, I guess that element, for lack of a better term? Could that be, I guess, could they use the front of the structure, or even the deck, to access the restaurant for maintenance or repair?
Probably, especially given, I mean, the skills of Bogosian Development, which owns the property, yes. I'm sure they can, they can do a lot of things.
And has there been any consideration, last question, I promise. Has there been any consideration to an alternate trash removal system, which would not require dumpster removal in the rear?
A very, very little bit of consideration to date. If, if the deck is not built, there'll still need to be a dumpster, but then the dumpster possibly could be in the right-of-way next to the building, and will still block access. Again, we don't think we're blocking anybody's rights. Would it be possible to remove the trash from the premises daily and take it somewhere else? Maybe to the dumpster that serves...
Trash on Main Street.
Timbers, which is in common ownership. We haven't really thought about it.
Trust me, we're not suggesting anything. I'm just asking, just for the adification of the board. That's all I have.
So, we think that, we think that the access to the rear for the trash is, one, it's the use which is so easily shown to have existed for decades. And, two, is minimal. Doesn't, in our opinion, overburden anybody's easement. And we think we can live well with a situation that that's the only use of the rear. How it's being used now.
Could I just say, we're not hearing anything new. I think it's time to continue this at this time. You say you already have a drawing that shows that, as John had requested, that it would be...
That we do.
Can you provide it at our next meeting?
When is your next meeting?
The 10th of January, apparently.
Yeah, I could provide it later tonight if you needed it, but we have it.
Thank you. Then let's... Go ahead.
Thank you.
There have been a number of misrepresentations that we have dealt with from the beginning. For instance, a special permit for reduction of parking. This is a total parking waiver for a 130-seat restaurant. The four tables that Attorney Amant mentioned, they must be big tables, because there are 56 to 58 seats out on the deck. Also, I would like to assure you, Mr. Dreyer, that my client's statement that they would block their seven and a half feet was in response to a statement made at the site plan visit, which we've not heard anything about your site plan visit, which was quite irregular also, that if they did not get the deck, they would block the way. And he just said it again tonight, that he would probably put a dumpster in the way. So there is no civil disobedience that has been deliberately set forth by my clients or by me, but in response to, if we don't get the deck, we'll block the way anyway.
In other words, if this board makes a decision that you don't like, you're just not going to agree with it.
No, this was said...
That's happening on a national level. We don't need that at a local level.
No, no. That was said by Attorney Amant at the site visit, where people were all over and did not stay together. As much as Jed tried to keep everyone together, that site visit didn't follow your rules. And Attorney Amant said at the end of that visit to me, if we don't get the deck, if he doesn't get the deck, his clients, he will block his way. So I don't want it to be misunderstood that we came up with this idea. And my knee-jerk response was, well, if you block your way, then we'll block our way. But it's not, it is something that should be worked out. And I thank you very much, Mr. Drewley, for requesting an alternate plan, because that's all we're asking, is for some sort of fairness here. There has not been fairness from the beginning, the way that this has been presented. And that's all.
Madam Chair, I suggest we move on.
I think that we should move on.
I am the sister of one of the co-owners of 137 Main Street, and I know you're talking about people being...
Would you give your name, please?
Nancy Gregorio, I live in North Falmouth. You know, you're talking about people being able to come up with a solution. There really isn't a solution. The only solution is that there be no deck, because it's very upsetting to sit here. You can't get down there now to their condominium, you know, even without a restaurant. But it's very upsetting, sitting here, listening to everyone talk, you know, numbers and all this, when the fact of the matter is, these people in the condominium at 137 Main Street are going to be unsafely trapped down there, with limited access to get out, with one little alley to get out. Ambulance, fire trucks, it's just not safe for those people to be trapped back there if this deck is built. So it's just really upsetting for these people in this neighborhood to sit and listen to all this when we're not talking about the safety of the people in the condominium. Thank you.
Thank you. Jed, would it be out of order to have safety personnel? Who would that be? Take a look at this situation, because people don't necessarily, maybe they do have to exit in their vehicles, but they don't. There are all kinds of ways to walk out of there. When I was parked, as you pointed out, in front of your condominium, I could see that you could walk right around the, that really nice stone wall that separates you from going forward towards St. Barnabas. You can walk right down there to the, to the left of it, up the little incline, and you're into another piece of property. You can walk out. Apparently, you can walk out behind timber.
That's a hill that I've fallen down. And that's considering someone's not disabled and unable to walk out of their home.
I'm not a safety expert. I'm asking if there is such a person that we could enlist to help us with this decision before January 10th?
I suspect that we can have a conversation with our public safety...
That would be good, because we know we're probably going to continue to the 10th now anyway. I think we've all exhausted ourselves tonight, and thank you for turning out to do it.
I would think the next time we do it, I'd actually like to see what represents there is now, because I believe there's a whole building missing here, and this is a misrepresentation.
It's a very old photograph. We're not going to use that.
No, but the right-of-way they're talking about, looks like that truck can make the turn, and there's a whole building missing off the site.
That photograph doesn't matter, Jim.
They keep bringing it up.
Well, ignore it.
Kendall, the Kendall printing is right there. The Enterprise building is right there. If I had...
May I say?
Yes, I'm sorry, ma'am.
That. We're moving on.
Thank you.
Motion to continue?
I move that we continue this issue, both issues, until January 10th.
By both issues, you mean also the special permit?
Both the special permit and the site plan review.
Is there a second? All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim? Charlotte, yes?
Pat, aye.
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
So, that's it for tonight.
If I may, we'll be in contact with the applicant to request an extension of the decision deadline as well. You may have noticed that...
Yes.
It's gone past that period, so we'll just, we'll be in, we'll be in contact.
Thank you. Thank you.
The picture's made part of the record, they would be submitted. I mean, they're presented here, I think it's...
It's irrelevant.
That's what he wants to show.
It's irrelevant.
Okay, we are all settled.
Wait, wait.
Out of order.
It's closed, the hearing's closed.
I appreciate the difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I still have your pen.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
There's nothing here.
We don't get to rule on it.
Okay, we can wrap this up. Now we move on to planning board discussion. Anyone want to discuss something?
Can you ask them to be quiet, please?
Excuse me, excuse me. Could you go outside the room so we can finish our meeting?
We're still in business here. You're all out of order.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, please, stop talking.
Let's go.
Okay. Discussion. Any items somebody wants to bring up at this time? Paul?
Committee reports.
You have a committee report?
Just very brief.
Okay.
Last meeting, I spent a lot of time talking about the DEP-proposed regulations, and we have a letter that was requested by December 15th. Town planner has been talking to not only town council, excuse me, not only town council, but the acting town manager, and he's prepared a letter that he needs to have you sign, so you get it out.
I think I signed it. I signed it.
Basically, it supports the select board policy-making event activities, rather than independent review by the planning board. So I'm very pleased to see that, and thank you for taking it on and getting it done in a timely manner.
You're welcome. We'll submit those comments to DEP tomorrow morning.
Great, and thank you for pushing us into it, Paul. Thanks.
Not done yet. It's not over.
For now. Any other committee reports or things you wish to discuss at this time? Announcements? Any announcements?
Merry Christmas.
General correspondence. We've seen what we, what we had, future agenda items.
So, we're meeting January 10th, and I believe it's the 24th.
Fourth.
Fourth, thank you.
Twenty-fourth.
In January. However, then there comes February. So our meetings are going to be on Valentine's Day, and then the next week's school vacation, so we typically don't meet that week. And then we'll meet the following week. So it would be Tuesday, Valentine's Day, and then two weeks later.
Oh, the 14th and the 28th?
You got it.
Are you guys okay with that?
You must think we don't have a personal life that needs celebrating.
I'm not okay with it. I'm planning an event for Valentine's Day at my art gallery.
For that evening?
For that evening, yep. Fundraiser for Knopscalite.
From nine to 12 at night?
No, from six.
After the meeting?
When is it?
But I haven't missed, I think I won't miss one meeting in about 15 years. I can miss, I can miss another one after.
So what are the meeting dates in January?
From five to seven.
January 10th and January 24th.
There shouldn't be any issues there. But February is an issue.
February's where the...
Potentially.
It goes on to seven or eight. I mean, it's hard, we're going to wire block out at the last minute.
Just start it earlier. Then I could go. Okay, so...
Perhaps what Melinda's getting at is staff may have other things to do on Valentine's Day.
Are you sure?
Every day's Valentine's Day.
If you're so inclined.
May I move adjournment?
Please.
I move adjournment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Pam. Thank you.
Bye-bye.